Right, good morning. It is ten o'clock on Tuesday, July eleventh. I'd like to call our Axerson County Commission meeting to order. And have you guys please stand and join me in welcoming Mr. Jim Corbode to join us with the invocation.
Today, as we call upon the Lord, I want to direct our attention to a prayer of King David. This prayer was spoken in Thanksgiving for the collecting of the materials to construct the first temple in Jerusalem. It reads as follows. Blessed are you, O Lord, the God of Israel, our Father, forever and ever. Yours, O Lord, is the greatness and the power and the glory and the victory and the majesty for all that is in the heavens and in the earth is yours. Yours is the kingdom, O Lord, and you are exalted as head above all. Both riches and honor come from you, and you rule over all. In your hand are power and might, and in your hand it is to make great and to give strength to all. And now we thank you, our God, and praise your glorious name. But who am I? And what is my people that we should be able to thus offer willingly? For all things come from you. And of your own you have given, we have given you. For we are strangers before you and sojourners as our fathers were. Our days on earth are like a shadow. There is no almighty. These words can be found in First Chronicles, chapter twenty-nine, verse ten of Paul. Now let us pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for Casey and Eric and Alan as they lead our county. We acknowledge and confess that all things come from you. As they consider personnel matters, as they work to construct a budget for county operations, as they look to the whole operation of our county, may your wisdom guide them. May they find both the talent and the resources needed in these days. It seems we live in changing times. Do increase our vision so we see matters from your viewpoint. As King David said, our days and times do change. You have made all things from the beginning. You've worked through many days in the past and understand us very well. Your steadfast love endures forever, and your faithfulness comes to all generations. I pray that the stability of your presence will be the resource of guidance for the commissioners and for all those who work with them. May they work with the confidence of your leadership. May these words spoken by the Apostle Paul to the Romans be ours as well. For from him and through him and to him are all things. To him be glory forever. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Corbode. Hey, public comments. Seeing none. Approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from July third? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
It's moved second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pass three to zero. Commissioner comments? Commissioner North?
Um, I really don't have anything today. I don't think so.
Uh, I had a senior village advisory board meeting last week. It was really, really good. And I have fielded some bone calls in regards to our budget based on the article that was put out in the paper with the headline of county going to increase taxes. So. Yeah, the gentleman that called me was kind of fired up. And after the conversation, I asked him, did you read the article? And he said, no, I read the headline. And I called you and I was like, you know, go back and read the article. So kudos to Mary for catching the attention of Axson, Axson County on that one.
I've had a few of those conversations.
So, all right, I do have an addition under new business. We received the notice to proceed for the grading and ditch stabilization improvements on three hundred and tenth road over the Little Delaware River. And that's for King's construction and excavating. So the contract will commence on July twelfth. So tomorrow, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign this notice of proceed for that work.
Also move, say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass this three to zero. First on the agenda is an executive session for non-elected personnel.
I will move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at ten oh six PM for discussion of personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. That the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session at. How long was that going to be? Thirty minutes? Ten thirty-six AM at the EOC one zero four four three US Highway fifty-nine, and those present will be Brian Oswald, Mark Seltner, Jack Laurie, Joey Moore, and Pat Anderson and the three commissioners.
Okay. So, okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Uh, around noon.
Around noon.
Yep. He's scheduled for noon, so he might be.
Seven thirty-four.
Okay, we are back in open session. Have another thirty-minute non-elected personnel. Thanks, Brian. Thanks.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at ten thirty-seven AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. So the board come out of executive session at uh, one, or eleven. You say thirty minutes?
Yeah.
Eleven oh seven? No. Yeah. Eleven oh seven? Yeah, yes. In the EOC one zero four four three US Highway fifty-nine, and those present will be the HR Director, three commissioners, Finance Director, and Pat Anderson. So cover everybody.
All right. Yeah, I think so. Yep. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. We're heading right into another executive session. So we are back in open session, and we have about eight minutes until our next executive session.
It's from the Historical Society that's coming today.
Send the email. Yeah, okay, just a pretty copy for you.
It's the time appropriation is twenty-three, ten thousand.
Where are we on the courtroom availability?
Uh, they are not able to house us there on that Tuesday. So Michelle just asked Memorial Hall if they had availability just to give you guys a backup plan, because I suppose you could still do it in the commission room, but before you made a decision, like saying, yeah, you can choose Memorial Hall, we thought we better check to see if it's feasible to. They may have a sporting in that. So we'll hopefully get a response back.
Also, I think we want to check with Wes about the equipment, because he said it was a lot more difficult there, but just make sure that it is an option.
But we'll wait. Do it there or.
Close range.
Up over there.
Yeah, on any of the.
She's not signed in yet, so. I look for her to sign in too.
I'm sorry. Yeah, because she was joining via Zoom, and I was thinking we were. As soon as she pops on, we can go. I was just trying to wait for her. She just asked me to. She should be.
We have one hour.
Yeah.
He's on. Well.
Yeah, okay. Yep.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at eleven fourteen AM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion, and that the board come out of executive session in one hour. Uh, in the EOC one zero four four three US Highway fifty-nine, also, we have one member to be a Zoom platform, and those present will be three commissioners, Lindsay Wood and Mr. Mercier from the Senior Village, Finance Director, County Counselor, and HR.
Hey, all seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. We are back out of executive session and open session.
Yeah, I'm a manager, I would like to take a couple of statements. I think in lieu of the ongoing study on the actions in your village and trying to make a decision as to rule the county in that regard. I would like to move that we pursue hiring a broker to assist us in the possible sale of a facility to another healthcare entity.
Okay, motion on the floor.
Well, seconded.
It's been seconded, the motion and second to look into a broker for the sale of Senior Village.
Discussion.
Um, do we have any discussion? Okay. I just would echo the fact that the financials have been something that I've been struggling with for a while, and the more I read about the trends of Kansas long-term care in order to make sure that our residents and staff have long-term success in their future dealings that this is, this is the right move that we need to do. So with that being said, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero, and we will move. All right. Next on the agenda is Steve Kaplinger, Axison County Historical Society, twenty twenty-four budget request. Welcome.
Hi there.
Hi.
How you guys doing?
Good. How are you?
Okay, I just, I really miss those second sessions.
Yeah, bet you do.
I'm assuming that you've got all my.
Yes.
My plug.
Yep.
Yeah. If you, I'd like to go ahead and, and I'm presenting a different looking kind of a financial paperwork, you know, than what you maybe been used to seeing before, and I wanted was yours in color?
Yes.
Okay, here. Well, it's mine.
Uh, the, the financial part of this, but I was, I want to make sure I'm telling you what. When I say yellow and I say green.
I know.
So anyway, on and to give you an idea of what I go through in my mind when I'm working on budgets and things, we have you know, money that comes to us from what we consider to be kind of predictable sources. And then money that comes to us in the form of grants and, and special donations for special projects. And so what I tried to show you here was in the yellow, those are those items that are ongoing, normal kind of fixed expenses, things that, that I know that I have to do every year. And then those areas that are green are things that are being funded by special grants and donations. So for example, you see payroll expense. We have a specific grant every year that we receive that in total, there's three of them that total up enough money that are basically to support having a person at the museum to help us with our ongoing mission. Because everything else is pretty much, you know, done by volunteers like myself. You know, even though I put in twenty to thirty hours a week on the job, you know, I'm not a paid person. You get the benefit of all my years of experience and history. Oh, great. So anyway, so the green items are special. The, and the yellow, so if you look down through those things, those are um, and I gave you two different time periods. I gave you one that was the entire year. So that would be the one that is two pages long. So that would be the completed year of two thousand and twenty-two. Then the one that is on a single sheet, that one is just year-to-date numbers. A lot of our expenses, our grants and things are not timed, but like, for example, grants that I get that are for wages. I get those all upfront, and then gradually I spend it down as I go through the year. So.
So this is all.
That would be all of twenty-two, yes, and this is twenty-three year-to-date as actually thirty. So I thought, so you, you see that what I did at the bottom of the page. Um, if we look at the twenty-two, when the two page, you see that I put down those things that I feel are fairly predictable, which, you know, dues and donations in the museum. Uh, as I look back historically, they, these are kind of numbers that we see every single year. And then the tax revenue and then the expenses, you see that we, in the last year, in those yellow categories, we possibly cashed three thousand dollars. In years past, we've actually been a negative in that area, that we're doing a better job on the donations that come through the door. And our dues income has gone up in the last five years from about a a sub-five-hundred-dollar number up to three to four thousand dollars a year. So we're doing better on collecting dues from people, and that, that, that's what's bringing us up over the top. You know, many years ago, we were receiving somewhere between fifteen and seventeen thousand dollars a year from the county. And then it got diminished and all the way down to seventy-five, and we were really in trouble then. And then I think it was two years ago, we bumped it up to ten thousand. Kind of coming back up a little bit, and we think with our present operations, the way things are going, that we still know see no reason to ask for any more, but we would like to receive the same amount that we've received in the last couple of years. I, I don't feel, I feel like we're getting a lot more support from grants, because I've been so far, I've never been turned down for a grant.
Nope.
Wow, that's awesome.
We need you.
When I did it for.
We won't pay either, but.
Yeah. Well, I get paid zero for doing this, so. But anyway, we, when I did grants for the school district when I was on the school board, I, I hit a hundred percent on all of those, so I've been lucky so far with. Then when I help other people get grants, I'm not, for somebody comes to me for advice, I don't do something. But for things I'm involved with, I'm adding better than Ted Williams. And of course, I gave you my list and all that kind of stuff. And I apologize, I, I really thought I would have the most current one nine ninety for you by this date, but I'm just it just seems like it takes a long time.
It's a couple of years behind. Seems a rabbit come up online. Everybody's always.
Well, we do the long form.
Yeah.
Yeah, because on grant, when you're doing grant applications, you really have to have the nine ninety and a right, the long form. We would actually up until this last year, we've always been eligible to file it on the e-post part, where you just do it online. That when you receive a total amount of revenue that's in excess of fifty thousand, you're required to go long. And because of the grants that we've received, we have exceeded that. Now, also, if you notice, one other thing, I bring your attention on those financials. You see there's four different, well, on the two thousand twenty-two, there were three columns besides the total. And those funds that say Statue, Lincoln, Black Business District, Neverland Museum, those are special projects, and that's money that's been given to us for special projects. We do not consider that as our money to spend on anything other than those. And so and then this is also on a cash flow basis. So if you notice on, on the year twenty-three, you see that it's a negative sixty point twenty-five, but if you look at twenty twenty-two, and you look at the railroad, you see it's positive one hundred and fifteen. Well, that was the year that we received the grants to take care of those rolling stock and engine and things like that. So this is how the income here and for the next several, maybe the next year or two, we'll be spending that down as we're able to get contractors to do work. Same is true on the Lewis Clark. That's basically you see a negative two eighty-six, but at least if you look on our balance sheet, you know, we have a we have a balance of about seven thousand in that account, that we can only spend it for things that are associated for general improvements of the Lewis Clark Park. That's money that came to us through the Kansas Wild Black Parks and the Lewis Clark Project from way back in two thousand, we had, yeah, the two-hundred-year anniversary. So that money is, it just is going to gradually just fade away to nothing as we have expenses. We can't use it for maintenance. We can only use it for improvements. And so that's where we're at on that.
Four, I think, it's been a while. No, it was two thousand and four, I think. Something about.
I think it was. Yeah. And then notice there's a new column in twenty-three, which is called the Black Business District. This is a project that we're trying to help facilitate. Uh, they don't have a formal five-on-one-C-three. Um, it's, it's in its infancy now. We're seeking to get all these requirements accomplished so that the city of Axison would actually allow that little bit of property that they own where these buildings are to, to go over into the name of this new five-on-one-C-three. So what we're doing is we're using our tax exempt status as a place where people can start donating money because there's some initial expenses going into this, like an engineer study and things like that. So we're acting as a money launderer for the Black Business District. Yeah. Until they, they were able to get.
It was a situation together, yeah.
Which we have volunteered to help them accomplish. And it seems like a project that we're the logical organization to help facilitate that. I hate to push that off on anybody else, but so we have accepted that. Which we do for a lot of other organizations that, that has to do with like historic preservation.
Popped myself out of Jesus. Sorry.
It'll come, it'll come later. Hey, you guys have any questions, any concerns, anything that you need that I need to be providing for you?
I'm impressed at how much you had to deliver on the budget.
Yeah, it's very impressive, and I've kind of followed along all the things you're facilitating and being able to help with of initiatives around. It's.
I think it's a lot of bang for the buck.
Yeah.
Well, we, we're trying to leverage things, and then um, but I'm pretty tight, and so.
And that's appreciated.
Jim is on our board as well, and, and so when somebody gives me money for something, I I try to do it as stingily as.
Yes.
And when we received the, the railroad museum uh, property, all the rolling stocks, so basically we received a huge liability. You know, a lot of things that hadn't been. You know, a lot of things that hadn't been done for a long time. And so. Thanks to some local people's leadership, we were able to get a pretty good donation to help get that ball rolling. I can see a couple million dollars worth of things that need to be done. So we'll just do what we can and preserve it the best we can. And, but yeah, it's a. I understand that before we took it over that this asbestos remediation. They had a bid for twenty thousand dollars to do the job. Well, we went shopping. And I got it done for sixty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So. So, and, and the people that gave us all that money. You know, when I get to the point where. I think we've accomplished everything within our grant application. There's money left over that I'm gonna offer it back to. Or give them the option of letting us keep it and do more projects on the engine. So we'll see how that goes. And, you know, there again, if you guys, you know, we're, I'll tell you what, we're really getting a lot of. In fact, I, I've kind of lost count. Research requests from people from all over the place and. And it's amazing that, you know, it, it seems like kind of a pain in the cazoos. Sometimes you get all these phone calls from people from all over the United States. And needing help and trying to locate things. Well. It actually is helping us in a way because we are gathering stories. And sometimes even artifacts from people that are fifteen hundred miles away from us. And we're getting all this information. That has been taken from the community, you know, generations ago. And now we're getting information back. So we're adding that to our library of. Information so that we can help other people in the future. So we're really getting, even though we're doing a lot of work. Doing research for people, we're getting a lot of benefit from it as well here back in the community. So it. It goes both ways. Our cooperation is getting us also cooperation from other people that we never knew before. Did you know that the Sandbo Pancake Factory or Mill? Was, it was locally, it was made here. And I don't know if they've ever seen. You guys are not old enough, but well, you weren't here, but you know, down by the Blair Mill that used to be close to the, the bridge. There used to be a mill there and off to the side of it was a shorter building, which is now being used for some other kind of a store. That's by the tracks.
Right.
Well, I've got these pictures that show that it said Sandbo Pancake Mill on, on the building. And. This was started way back in nineteen ought something. And they had this trademark. Advertisement that they used where there says. Black man who was cooking pancakes and he was, well, we found out that he was born in Atchison. He was raised in Muscota and he worked for Blair Mills in the Pancake Factory and they used him as his model. For their national advertising. And, and, and this lady called me up and she doesn't have any pictures of this man. I got him, they're on his ad, the advertisement. So I sent her this information. Well, she's sending me all kinds of stuff about the guy. He's really interesting. And. The Aunt Jemima syrup company sued the Sandbo Pancake Mill. For patent infringement of all things and they won in court. It went to the Supreme Court and they lost. And I, I can't see the patent infringement because, but I guess because they had a black woman as their model on their syrup. That they took offense to the pancake company having a black model that was a man. In their advertisement. And so they saw that as a patent infringement.
Seems crazy.
That they wouldn't have lost that, but they, they went Supreme Court and they lost the case. And so that's why the Sandbo Pancake Company ceased to exist in Atchison. And it just became Blair, Blair Mills Pancake Village.
Yes.
And I've never heard this before until I got this research request. And it's a lot of things like that that come to us. It's just, you know, I, people can ask me about history of everything west of the airport and I already know all that stuff. Cause I listened to his dad. But who was there when the county was formed? Well. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's. But, but now that I'm becoming involved in this, I'm, I'm learning so much more about the Atchison city history. And it's just really, really, it's really interesting.
And what dad didn't know he made up.
That's right.
Can you bring him to our next meeting?
Calling the liar. Anyway. If you need anything, yell at me.
Yeah, I'd love to.
I don't pay attention to that, that, you know. I'm available anytime, guys. I do appreciate you guys cooperating with that statue of Lincoln banging.
Oh, yeah.
And giving it a proper home that it looks nice to. Much better than it would have been across the street as it was originally planned.
And I guess you're following up with the. Alan with the, who owns the statue and.
Yeah, I think. No, I gave him a little bit of a faith that we had a discussion with Rick Burger. There, the press needs from. Courtney Turner Trust sent us a letter to verify as far as they were concerned. I haven't seen that yet. Yeah, I've not contacted her. I haven't contacted.
We have no membership in it.
Well, I figured that, but you know, just for.
Kind of like Duffy, if somebody runs over, you know, it's not my problem.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we need to verify that so we can right do our due diligence with it and we just need to. Get with our insurance carrier and everything else. So, and I know you've been, you were very instrumental in one of those. That helped with the getting A B there, so.
Oh, I did.
That's one of the enemies good, bonder money.
Yeah, yeah. Guys, anything, give me a shout.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have been, well, I've been telling the commission. Yeah, and there are several statutes that give the. There's a statute that makes preservation of historical records, a public purpose, purpose for which you can spend money. There's a statute which gives the authorization for you to spend money to display items of historical interest. So. For a museum or something like that. And there's Jen, Jen, and yet another one that just gives the general authority for you to. Levy attacks for historic preservation purposes. None of them have any specific dollar in the article, have an actual requirement. So it is discretionary.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I'm the counselor of next. Well, I was going to, the HAMs contract kind of falls under Pat's umbrella. So, and. Well, and I don't think we're ready for procurement discussion. I'm not sure if that just got carried over. Weren't we going to tackle that after the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, that's that, okay.
Put on there about a month.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So, yes, if the county counselor, if you could update us on the HAMs contract and then. We have the resolution for appointment of appraiser.
Well, the, the HAMs contract. Tamphory. This is the contract regarding. Solid waste operations that they're hauling. They, they did give a. A notice of termination of contract, which is required a hundred and eighty days before it is due, but then also a suggestion. For a couple of modifications to that contract. The modifications were we really to address problems that we've actually had. One of them was we had a fire. Some batteries, I think, that were placed in. One of the. Trash bins and they, they wanted to add unacceptable materials to. The contract. Actually kind of make sense. And I think we're probably responsible. They, they wanted to, to change the rate a little bit. Modification of rebate application schedules. So there were, there were several of those changes. Most of them, I think, were fairly minor, although they all addressed. Situations that have occurred. And so the, the issue really comes up and we want to try to negotiate. With them or do we want to sit down and have to. And sending out another RFP, there's, I think there's really. Two, well, maybe one, but I, I think two possible. Likely. Response to that. Yeah, I. Wonder if I will stay see about it. She was more of the opinion. It had been your direction.
Yeah, that was the direction she gave us in April.
So. So June twenty-eighth is when, when you have said. Their, their termination. I've not talked with them yet. Since then, I had a discussion with, with Stacy about it. That was all. Wasn't really expecting to be on the. So I will, I will give. There any questions about that?
I said, say deadline to Calico. Timeline, we need to stand by. Already passed her.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think. Yeah, we need to do it in time that if we're not able to reach some agreement. To find somebody else, you know, that we could sit down the other, another RFP, so.
Should we do an emergency session next week and talk about the details?
I think she just wanted it done immediately.
And I'm okay with.
It's from the conversation I had with her, the direction in April was let's get this contract done so we can.
What they were asking is seem outrageous. It's a five-year deal too. That's what gets me, five years.
Yeah.
And her advisory board is all on board with the same.
Yeah.
Stan.
I think they've been very satisfied.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good company. So do we need a motion?
I, I don't think so. You'll have to approve that agreement when it comes up. So.
And then I have the resolution for appointment of appraiser. Do we have a number on what that one will be? Twenty twenty-three dash. One five two seven. All right, I would look for a motion. To adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen twenty-seven, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas. Appointing Holly Hackathorn as appraiser for Atchison County, Kansas. I have an employee payroll status form that will go along with this. Start date, July twenty-fourth of twenty-three at a salary of seventy-eight thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as described?
So move, say.
Okay, it's been moved in second and.
Well, did that one have, I, I had made a mistake on the earlier draft. I'm not sure where it got corrected. They're, they're four-year terms and they're supposed to end. They started in ninety-three and so it should end in June, June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
And I have, okay, so that's.
Yeah, the term expiring, yeah, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Yes. Okay, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. I am excited for Holly to start. While we interviewed her, I thought she was great. So. I think that will be a really good addition. No, yeah, we should probably additional that to a good. Seven eleven.
Yeah, just at the bottom.
I know it's making a couple of shit myself.
Okay, Pat, you have anything else for us?
Axay always. Having on. There were a hundred and twenty-four people that need to be notified. We've notified nineteen-four of them, at least.
The advanced suicide in the remaining ones.
Well, that's, that's where we are. I. There are only a few that we don't have, that I don't have leads on or something. So. There's. It's, it's going well. I, I sent an email out a couple of weeks ago. I got some of the feedback. And the time really hasn't. Hadn't been enough time for the sheriff to try to get service. We have to. Request some services and then get that into the sheriff, the sheriff to sort of get back.
Have a motion to approve the expenses as presented. It's been moved a second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any public comment? Seeing none. We are going to be here till one, but I would look for a motion to adjourn into a budget workshop following our one o'clock meeting. Aren't we? Budget workshop with the financial director. Well, because we're supposed to be in session and it's still one P M. So. We'll, we'll be in session till one P M, but we can go ahead and adjourn into budget workshop. So sorry.
Yeah, move for adjournment to budget workshop.
Okay. So I got moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Do that.